Chair, this open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting has no hearing associated with it, will not have public comment. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
I'm here.
So, we have four members here, and that is a quorum. And then I'll introduce town, uh, planning department staff who are present with us. Our planning director, Lee Newman.
Present.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Cle.
I am present.
And we also have with us Clay Hutchinson, who is a conservation administrator, but who is here to assist us with our, any technical issues we have during our meeting. Thank you, Clay. So for everyone participating in the meeting, of course, be aware that others may be able to see and hear you, and anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. And all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www dot needham MA dot gov, unless otherwise noted. And all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call. So, um, the agenda item on a, is discussion of town meeting articles, including possible amendments. So, that's a broad agenda item. Um, I know the specific item we, we hope to deal with tonight is the amendment proposed by, as I mentioned, by Stephen Fraal. And so, do we want to go directly to that? Or is there anything else regarding these amendments that have been foretown meeting that we wish to discuss? Lee, do you want to guide us as far as anything we should be discussing tonight beyond?
Well, I, I, I think tonight, we just need to, I think, settle on our recommendation on this, on this amendment. And then I think, talk a little bit about, you know, how we're going to manage town meeting in terms of answering questions on the article, who's going to take the lead on, on what articles? And, and just kind of go through the logistics of that.
Good, good. So, I think, I think I have the most recent wording of Mr. Fraal's amendment. Let me just, uh, let's see.
I think that's, that's his email dated April 11th, April 21st.
April 21st, okay. I've got the subsequent emails. Let me go back to the, oh yes, here it is.
Ask the question first, because I have a question that relates to this, but I haven't had a chance to look it up myself, and maybe Lee knows the answer off the top of her head. Needham has adopted the stretch code?
That's correct.
Is that in the zoning bylaw, or is that in the general bylaw?
Uh, it's, it's not in the zoning bylaw.
That's what I thought. So that's in the general bylaw. Okay. Thank you. I will wait for further discussion then.
Um, excuse me, um, I thought I had Mr. Fraal's wording, and I'm having a hard time of finding it. Um, Lee, do you have it that?
Yes, I do. I have it.
Read it to us, or put it up on a screen?
Um, you want me to share my screen? I can do that.
Yeah, that would probably be the best thing.
Okay.
No, I thought it was at the end of some of this more recent emails, but it's not. So, I'd have to go, I just don't have it printed out that I can easily find. Let me see. Oh, I'm sorry. It was on a different pile of paper. All right, I now have it.
I'd like to see it anyway.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
It's very small with people in the room.
Let me, I'm just trying to make it bigger, just give me, what happened here? Happened to it.
Try clicking on the box.
Ah, now it just closed, darn it. I'm sorry. Um, just reopen it, I'm sorry. Can you see it?
Yes. Yes. Can you make it even larger? Yes, good.
How's that?
All right. Why don't I read it out loud too? It's not particularly long. Uh, so this is his, Stephen Fraal's amendment. Delete, in, uh, this is in Article Five of the zoning article that creates the Highway Commercial One District. So he would delete a small E, and that, this is in the section, by the way, that has to do with special permit criteria. Delete E, which now says, "The proposed development should incorporate as many green building standards as practical, given the type of building and proposed use." And instead, insert E, "The proposed development should build," I think that's a misspelling that I think is to be corrected, "build," it should be "build." The proposed development should "build."
Or "be built."
Or "be built," yes, one or the other, "to the most energy efficient building standards." In parentheses, EG, "Stretch Building Codes," end of parenthesis, "approved by the State of Massachusetts at the time the special permit is requested, regardless of whether the Town of Needham has adopted those standards for townwide use." So, that's, that's his amendment. And, uh, we have gotten, you know, we have checked this with our, with town council. And, uh, let's see, uh, do we have, do we have in the packet the response of town council, Lee?
Uh, yes, I think it's, um, yes, I think it's, 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 it's on my screen now.
Mm-hmm. Yes, this response was actually to us, an earlier version that Mr. Fraal had sent, is it not, Lee? Yeah, this response was to an earlier version that said, um, the new insert would be, "The proposed development should meet the definition of a zero-energy campus." Uh, and where was it? And then, uh, he just defined what a zero-energy campus should be. So, municipal council said, "Hello, Mr. Fraal, a rezoning bylaw that is adopted or amended must be sent to the Attorney General for review and approval." He says, "I believe your proposed amendment would likely be disapproved by the Attorney General on the ground that impermissively regulates matters that are covered by the state building code." And he says, in, then he says, "The current subsection E gives the property owner some flexibility," um, and, you know, citing the language, "as many green building standards as practical, without actually mandating any particular building materials or energy standards." And what town council is concerned about in his, in Mr. Fraal's proposal is, by actually requiring the developer to meet the definition of a zero-energy campus, that's imposing a requirement that gets into matters already regulated by the state code. And he attached a recent SJC case. But, but then, in response to that, Mr. Fraal did make the change that was read, so that the current wording is, um, is as, as was read. Let me get back to it. If we're saying, "The proposed development should build to the greenest building standards, EG, stretch building codes, approved by the State of Massachusetts at the time the special permit is requested, regardless of whether the Town of Needham has adopted those standards for townwide use." Now, it seemed as though the person in our town who knew the most about, um, the, um, the green energy and the town's, you know, recent adoption of, uh, to become a green community and adopt a stretch code, and what is happening on the state level, and what might happen. It was Charis Lustig, um, who said that, um, if the town wants to adopt presently what's contemplated is similar to what was done in the past. If the town is, if the state is going to have a stricter, um, um, energy code, that, that would, that would go for each municipality to adopt or not as it saw fit. So that's what we understand would be happening.
Did Charis do something in writing, Jean?
Um, did she? Yes, I think she.
Well, I, I, I think she raised the, I think she raised the issue, but I don't know that there's been a definitive answer, Jean.
That's true. That's true. I mean, this was just like, just this afternoon, back and forth about it. Because, um, so there was, there seemed to be some uncertainty, and we, we asked a few people in town departments if they had any up-to-date information. But I think the, well, I, I basically, it's, throw it open for discussion here now. But the, Mr. Fraal wants to require a development of this site to go with whatever the code the state has as its latest code, whether the town has adopted it or not at that time.
Can you, can you put up Chris Heap's latest letter or opinion?
Yeah, I missed, uh, right, and that would be the one.
That was the one that immediately preceded the, um, I have it up.
Uh, yeah, I, um.
Yeah. I, I, I kind of agree with his second paragraph.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Um, I have another question first, which is, and I wish I had time to do my own research, but I've been very busy at work. Um, I know that, like this project, we have, in various zones in town, set out, um, uh, standards for the special permit process and what we are to consider. But, Lee, refresh my memory, do we have a general special permit section of our bylaw that says, for all of our special permits, these are the criteria we are to be looking at?
We have a, we have a generalized section of the bylaw that speaks about, um, special permits, yes. Um, and I think we even did a reference back to that in the language, in the language of the zoning bylaws, to make sure we captured it. So that's.
So, let me tell you my thoughts then. Number one, considering all of the amendments that are in front of us, um, I am reluctant, especially where we've already voted our disapproval of the other amendments, I am reluctant to be in front of town meeting in favor of one amendment, but done in favor of the others. I think that we should just, um, ask town meeting to disapprove all amendments and vote on what we, what we as a planning board are presenting as our vision for this parcel, the town meeting, without amendments. We can give various reasons, including the fact that we really don't have time to vet these amendments like we vetted for, for, for four or five years, what went into the final version of, of what's in town meeting. Having said that, I am very sympathetic to Mr. Fraal's amendment. Um, just like I mentioned at our last meeting, I'm very sympathetic to the proposed amendment, um, to change the affordable housing criteria in, in the way that's proposed. And again, like the affordable housing, and as I just mentioned, we need to have hearings on it. We need to allow all of the people who would have an interest in it to present their views, and then maybe we can present it back. I'm thinking that if planning board is amenable to this, I'd like to see it being townwide, putting it into that section of the bylaw that talks about the provisions of, of, of the criteria to be considered during the special permitting process that applies to all of the districts in town, not just this one district. And that's why I'm suggesting that we disapprove it for this, um, uh, zoning bylaw in front of town meeting, at this annual town meeting, but I am perfectly amenable to taking it up as a planning board. And maybe go back to town meeting with it in the fall, or next spring, if we can't get it in front of town meeting in the fall, uh, as a, an amendment, um, that, that, uh, would, would apply to, to all of the districts in town, not just, not just this district. I think that regardless of the stretch code, that the town, and I may be wrong, I'd have to discuss it with Chris Heap, but I think that, um, uh, no matter what the town proves as a stretch code, we as a planning board can set whatever criteria we want, they have to be in the zoning bylaws, but we can have zoning bylaws that sets forth the special, the special permit criteria that we are to consider, regardless of, of whether the town, I mean, with, with, clearly within certain parameters, we can't violate state law. As is mentioned in the prior iteration, Mr. Heap's reaction to the prior iteration, we can't, we can't change what the building code is, that's beyond our purview. But I think something like this, we could, we could very possibly, even though the town hasn't, let's say there's a new stretch code, that, that the Commonwealth says, uh, each town can adopt this new stretch code, but it has to go through that adoption process, hasn't been adopted yet in Needham. If we have this language in our special permitting provisions, I think we as a planning board can still consider that as part of our special permitting prerogative. And, uh, that's the way I'd like to see it go. As I said, I, I'm very sympathetic to what Mr. Fraal wants to do, and I'd love to do it townwide, if legally we can do it at all.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Let me see if Adam Block, Martin Jacobs have a comment to make this time. Adam?
Marty, do you want to go ahead?
Well, I would just say what I, what I think I've already said, which is, for Paul's reasons, but also for the reason expressed in Chris Heap's letter, um, I, I think it would be open to challenge to, uh, go along with Mr. Fraal's amendment as written. I, I would actually, I'm prepared to make a motion when Adams had his say, to simply recommend that we do not approve of that amendment or adopt that amendment.
Adam, is there anything that you want to add yourself to this?
So, I, I think I would say that I, in reading town council's latest correspondence, I, I concur with Marty with what you're saying, and I think generally, Paul, with what you're saying. And what I mean a bit more specifically is, I don't know necessarily that we want to adopt the same standard for every, you know, for every use in every, in every district across the board. It's something that I'd like to understand a little bit more, there may be certain requirements that would be stronger, or, uh, for, uh, for a by right scenario under certain districts. And there could be a scenario where we, I certainly understand that we want to utilize the leverage that we have through a special permit and, and increase, but I think we may also want to look at our minimum standards too. To do that, you know, I would need to look at it, um, and to study it a little greater in detail. We have some expertise in town that I would love to consult if we bring them in, you know, in some kind of a public hearing and have them participate. Uh, there are others, I'm sure, as well, but it's, um, we have some of the expertise in town, I'd like to take advantage of it and understand this a little bit more broadly. And I concur with, with my colleagues, and that although I'm interested in achieving a greater sustainability code, uh, through, as a goal of our overall, um, zoning bylaw, I think, uh, you know, on this, I know that I would oppose it. I do oppose it.
Which is why we need to have the process where we vet it more over, over the course of future meetings.
I agree.
The time to, to consider it and work out the most effective wording, uh, to accomplish what I think is a very worthy goal.
Agreed.
And, um, I'll add that in the meeting we just had with the select board, when I listed many of the planning areas we want to focus on in our planning over the next year or two, uh, select board member Mary Ann Cooley especially mentioned sustainability as something that we should focus on, and I agree, we should and we will. And it is, um, and it's very much like, and I agree with the comment about being very sympathetic with those who wish to, uh, expand the, um, the income range of those who are eligible to, um, rent, um, the affordable housing units. Uh, but we should really, we're trying to, um, study that townwide, we very much intend to study that townwide, really in this coming year. And so just having a new proposal for one area doesn't, you know, isn't really the way to go, and the same thing is true for this proposal. So, um, I think it was suggested, oh, oh, I just want to mention something else, we just went through the special permit process for the, for the new Carter Mill development. And I remember the question being asked about what standard they would build to, and I believe the answer was that they will build to the, to the, what's referred to as the LEED's silver standard, though they won't go through, uh, the LEED certification. I know many developers prefer not to actually have to go through that process. I don't know whether that's something we're actually intending to put in our special permit, but that's kind of the kind of thing that we might, you know? And, and as was mentioned, we do have the flexibility, and we do have the reference right in our zoning for the HC One District now, that we will look for that sort of thing in any development, as we do, and we did with the Carter Mill. Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Uh, you have my motion, which I will restate, I move that we, uh, recommend, um, not adopting Mr. Fraal's amend, proposed amendment.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, not to adopt Mr. Fraal's proposed amendment to Article Five. So, uh, is there any further discussion? I had a call for a vote. Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, uh, so, uh, we have voted not to adopt, or not to recommend that, that amendment at town meeting. All right, so, uh, now we're moving to talk about town meeting and the process and, um, the questions that might arise during town meeting and who is going to address them. Lee?
Yes, I, I was going to recommend, um, that Adam has really taken the lead on Highway Commercial One, so, um, he should probably be, be the board member that really responds to those questions. Um, and Jean, I think you've taken the lead in terms of presenting the planning board's presentation, um, on Article Seven, which deals with the rezoning that George Genta had proposed, that maybe you should take the lead on that, as well as, um, any questions that might surface on the planning consulting funds. Does that seem like a plan to people?
Yep, that's, that's what I expected.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy to volunteer, Adam, for, for Highway Commercial One, and to volunteer, uh, Jean, for, for the other articles.
I think that's fine. Adam, I, I do want to say that I think the way the presentation was made tonight, this to the select board, was very effective. I think isolating the various changes since 2019, and the way you did it tonight, uh, really hits the nail on the head. And, um, I want to commend you, but I also want to recommend that maybe that's, that's exactly the kind of, um, presentation you want to make at town meeting.
So, I, I'm grateful for that, Marty, and thank you, and I, I learn each time as I go, uh, and there are some things that I wish that I had included, I suppose, in the firstness, you know, in the, uh, previous presentations that, that we've made. But I think that our presentation, which have already been, which has already been recorded, stands as our formal presentation. And that, and I, and Lee, I can correct me if I'm wrong, and I think.
There is no more presentation at town meeting.
So, it'll be a function of addressing, I suppose, any questions, and discussing any motions to amend.
Well, forgive me, I have not watched the presentation, but it, did it basically mimic what you said tonight?
It was, it was a bit more in-depth. Uh, I did not have that slide that I had created today for the presentation tonight. But I wonder if we could, Lee, add it to, I'd love to have on the, on the site, where you can click, uh, our presentation, if we could have a link that redirects to our Highway Commercial One site, where friends, we have the, uh, the FAQs and all the other materials. If we could do that pronto di ablo.
Let me find out tomorrow, I'll find out tomorrow if we can do that.
That would be immensely, immensely helpful. Uh, and then, I'll also, to Marty's point, uh, separate out that, uh, slide, and then we can include that as well, uh, either as part of the FAQ or as a standalone document, because I, I, you know, I think it does make an impactful statement, where some have said that we haven't really made any significant changes, there's not much news since 2019, that that's not accurate, that these were very substantial changes, uh, by use, by density for area ratio, by height, and by, uh, you know, other provisions as well, so.
Because I've, I've done two presentations also, Adam, I know how much time and energy goes into putting on one of these presentations, you know, recording it and getting and uploading it and everything. Um, perhaps Marty was suggesting that you do your presentation over again, um, and I just know that's a lot of work. I will say, I was speaking with someone yesterday who said, "Do you know only three people have?" do you know only three people have watched the presentation on Article 5? And I said, really? One of them was me, and one of them was Lee, and one of them was probably Adam. So I, you know, it probably, it's still time if if you wanted to to work it out with the town's staff that's handling this, to do a complete re-recording. But I don't want to say, oh, we all want you to do that. That's really a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, but-
Not so much already.
If it could be done, great. If it if it can't be done because it's too late, maybe there's another way to get that single page before town meeting members. You know, when we have live meetings at town meeting, there's handouts at the back. There will be handout opportunities, I assume, at the live town meeting. So maybe there's other ways. I don't know.
I don't know if there will be.
I think I think that's all being put online. I think it's posted online. I I think we need to do is is get it on the webpage with a link.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there an email, is there an email, Lee, this time around that goes to town meeting members? Can we check with the town clerk to see if, you know, if we can submit anything to town meeting members electronically?
I know that there is an email going out because Michael Fee is allowing the amendment proposers, once their amendments are in final form and he has he has approved them and Town Council has approved them, I mean, as to form, you know. And 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 as to form, we are happy with them that, you know, all those tests. He's going to put them on an email he's sending to town meeting members is what he said.
And that was for those, I don't know if that relates to ours. Let me find out, Adam, and I'll be in touch tomorrow morning.
That's helpful. And if I, I mean, I'm certainly happy to make the time to do it, to redo it if if we're able to do it. I think you're right, Marty. It was, that was an important slide, and I wish that I had the wisdom to include it in a previous iteration.
Hopefully better late than never, you know?
Yeah, but you might be able to get that slide in as a material that when you go to the town's website on town meeting, under each article, it has links to materials.
That's what I was referring to. That's what I was referring to before. If we could link back to our Highway Commercial 1 site, Lee, that, you know, that's critical.
Yeah, from, yeah, from that site where they're listening to the presentation. I mean, I know you mentioned it in your presentation, but-
I know, but I,
But after having-
Three people have watched it, and those three, three people watched it, and they might be just be on this screen right now. Hopefully others will get a little bit more informed and be engaged. But that's, we can just do our best. And I'm happy to suit up and take on the armor at town floor. And that's fine.
I actually thought that the, we might be in a position at town meeting where not only has the FinCom decided the way they did, but I I thought it was, anything was possible after that, which was maybe the Select Board was ready to abandon the idea too. I didn't know what was going to happen tonight. So I was very pleased with the outcome tonight. I think that Select Board certainly understands what we're trying to do. So maybe it's the FinCom that is going to have to explain themselves as to why they have, despite having been involved in the cooperative meetings that we've had seemingly been on board with what we were doing, what happened? I mean, I think they owe the explanation, I believe.
I agree. And that will be for, you know, we'll see how town meeting, you know, plays that out. In terms of the Select Board, are they making, are they taking a vote tonight?
As I understood it, they were taking a vote tonight later in the meeting.
That's what- So I have an update. This is Alex. Katie King just emailed Lee and me. And the Highway Commercial 1, let's see. The Commercial 1 recommended approval, three votes, yes, one abstention. That was Marcus. And also on the planning consultant fee, they recommended approval four to one.
On the planning consulting fee? Oh, yeah, wonderful.
There were only four members there tonight.
That's right. That's right. And just for your reference for the citizens petition, they recommended to not adopt four to zero.
They recommended not to adopt for the Hunting Road?
That is what I'm reading.
They have a fundamental policy difference, I think, on on that strip.
I'm very surprised. To me, it seems so like, you know, there's no planning goal, as we said in our presentation. There's no planning goal served by keeping that in the one acre zone.
Except to, except to perhaps minimize, you know, five or six additional homes to go in on that small strip.
Mr. Jenta said that there would be maybe two. And with a lot of very unlikely work with with, you know, exchanging of slivers of land, three.
Well, it certainly, the geographic area of those lots shrinks as you get closer to Kendrick. But this, there are several lots that are, you know, that are ripe for redevelopment, probably more than the two that Mr. Jenta had identified. And I think that that's a huge part of the concern from some of the members of the Select Board. Although, you know, once the zoning change is made, as, you know, as residents and property owners are able to, you know, knock down a small house and put up a big house, you know, or, you know, redevelop and do small subdivisions, that's also a possibility. So if it passes, that'll be able to happen here. And it's up to them how many and over how long of a period of time additional new houses would go into the area.
It, you know, we made our our decision and recommendation that this requires only a majority vote. But with it not having the Select Board's support, you know, I don't know what will-
Do we know if the FinCom has has voted on this?
They voted to support it.
They did vote to support it.
Wow.
That's good.
Mashup, yeah.
Yeah, that makes for an interesting town meeting where we've got, we've got, though, we've got the Select Board and the FinCom opposing each other on opposite views for the two zoning articles. Fascinating.
It is. And if you look at our own bylaw on the role of the FinCom, it is to consider the financial implications of things that are before the town. The the general laws are broader, and I was hearing a FinCom member refer to the general laws as the source of their power. But if you look at our own bylaws of what the FinCom's role is, it's it's what I, what we always thought to advise on the financial implications of what's proposed.
That's in our general bylaws?
Yes, I'll find it and send it to you.
Please do. That's interesting. I do know, I do know that the state law is is much broader than that.
Yeah.
You copy me too, Jean. That would be helpful.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Thank you. So Jean, you're going to be presenting on that. I leave it to your good judgment as to the extent to which you want to expound on our support of Mr. Jenta's.
I already did. I already did my presentation. It's already recorded.
Just for clarity, Marty and Paul, Marty, are you attending on Monday?
Physically, no. I'll be available by phone or Zoom or however you want, but I can't be there physically.
And Jean and Paul, you are both town meeting members, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We're wasting, we're wasting a vote by by not appointing, Marty, you're a town meeting member, right?
No.
Oh, so, see, we could, we could, we could appoint Marty Chair now. And we'd have one more vote.
That's right.
We tried to do that. It was the last, a year or two ago, Teddy Eaton was furious with us.
I remember that.
Didn't we do that around the large house or something? Well, first of all, she's always, you know, been furious with me for doing for doing a reorganization after town meeting. And I tell her, well, if someone's a chair and they're leading something, why should not be the chair to finish out their work?
Yeah, I see. Other boards make their reorganizations earlier, yeah.
Earlier. This didn't make any sense to me, but sorry.
Why should she care one way or the other?
It just was messing up her organizational.
Yeah.
I, you know, it was easier for her if everybody was doing the same thing, so easier to keep track.
Yeah, I get I get two packets of everything that goes out to town meeting members.
Yes.
And one goes in the trash and one, I save. I should probably drive it over to one of your houses, whoever wants it, but too late now.
So Alex has Alex has posted the meetings for Saturday and Sunday, I think it was 11 o'clock. And hopefully, you know, you'll be able to meet on Saturday. And then, of course, I think for Monday, I think it was, I think it was at noon. And I plan to be there on Monday. I can't sit with you, apparently. I'm not allowed to come come into the area where you're sitting, although I guess I could sit close to the fenced in area. And I'll have my phone so we can communicate if there is any questions, and I'll have all the files.
And you've got my phone number if you need me. I'll be watching, I'll be watching on TV, but I'll be by my phone. Obviously, you can call me and we can confer.
And Jean, I'll be I'll be reachable on phone on on the, watching the whole town meeting, the special, in case any questions come up, otherwise I don't.
Do you think on on Monday, if questions come up and you're there physically, they would allow you to walk down to where we are, to stand with us and talk?
I was told that that wasn't part of the protocol that last time, I have, I have, this is going to be my first time meeting since COVID. I was told by Katie, when I asked her that Charis, I guess, last time, was in a chair under a tree close to her board. She was not with the CPC. She was not with them physically. Paul, you would have been there. How did that work? Do you remember?
I, we didn't need Charis. I don't, I don't remember her being there, to be honest.
Now, she was sitting, I guess she was sitting under a tree available, is how I understood it.
I'll figure out my arrangements as well for for Monday.
Okay.
It sounds like I mispronounced, I I mentioned Charis's name earlier and mispronounced it, didn't I?
Lustig?
No, I said Carries.
Okay, oh, Charis, yeah.
Charis.
There was a question that came in, I think that Alex circulated to us from from a resident, a town meeting member who had some questions, and there, and I, Lee, I think I saw that you had responded, but I hadn't had a chance to read the response.
I didn't respond to him. I think I responded to you and Jean. I hope that was-
No, I didn't have him. In my email to you, it only was to you, Lee.
Yeah, I think I responded to the two of you. And yes, we do have those, we have the diagrams with which show the 50 feet. That's in all the dimensionals. That's actually in the zoning. So we have the graphics that show the 50 feet. I think I have a topo of that property.
Now, we also have a topography map through through the Needham GIS map, which I pulled up. So I could make a PDF of that and send that to you or Alex. And then if you could send as part of a response, the, one second, bud, if you could send as part of the response, the map that shows the the new setback along Highland and Ghul, that would probably be helpful too.
Here's another question, and it was harder to answer readily. He wanted, I think he wanted it presented visually, the other zoning districts and what their FAR limits are.
I think it would be easier to do that through a table.
That's exactly what I thought. I mean, he can look at the zoning bylaw and and see where the zone, where the areas are, but that would be a pretty easy table. Takes some work, but.
Yeah, well, it's somewhat complicated because you've got that 25% rule in some districts, and you don't have it in other districts. And then you've got overlays which create different sets of rules. So you've got, like, in the center of Needham, you know, it's a one as an FAR, but then you've got the overlay that lets you go up to other it's.
It's a lot of work, isn't it?
I mean, I, I think, I mean, one comparable is, you know, is the New England Business Center, mixed use 128, and then also on on Highland Avenue and kind of keep it tighter geographically to minimize, you know, the response. We can say more broadly, the range is X and Y across town, but specifically in this area as an example of these three areas, this is what it is.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Maybe not even going down Highland Avenue, but just cross comparatively with across 128. What do you think?
Well, across 128, it's going to be the one point, it's going to be the one point, it's going to, I think it's going to be an as of right one. And it's going to be a special permit 1.75. And then it's going to be that 25% special permit on top of the 1.75, so.
Is it lower than that in the mixed use?
I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, well, whatever it is, but.
And then we can restate what it currently is, you know, under the existing zoning.
Well, I'll work on that. I can work on that tomorrow morning.
It might actually end up being a useful exhibit. You know, that we could put on the website even.
Okay.
Shall I move to adjourn?
Sure.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Paul Albert?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
And the Chair is aye, so we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Bye.